Are already at capacity, where do you expect to put these new students that come in as a result of new families moving in and open enrollments? So to sum it up, we feel very passionate that this issue needs to be addressed immediately. High numbers in our schools are rooted in the city's growth. Edina Public Schools has grown fast and furiously. This is not a way to make Edina a better community. We believe it polarizes us because there is not enough thought or planning to help support and accommodate all the additional needs this creates. We have all moved to Edina for excellent schools and a thriving community. What we are seeing is a continued momentum towards further decline to the educational results in the community that has been the result of the past educational excellence. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Carrie Lassard.
Hi. Hi, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and I appreciate it. My name is Carrie Lassard. I am a former Edina graduate from the class of 1999, and I have three children, two of which are in Edina Public Schools, one which will be an incoming kindergartner. And yes, I did fill out my kindergarten registration form. So one thing, my topic is about the Edina Public School deficit. So it's kind of building on what Laura and Amy just spoke about. I attended the budget meeting, I believe it was the 25th of January, at Creek Valley. And so Dr. Stanley and Mert were there, and I appreciate all of the information that they shared with us. So a few follow-up questions, and I understand that you won't be able to answer these, but a follow-up would be greatly appreciated. So knowing that there are hotspots or hot zones, bubbles, if you will, in certain grade levels, it feels that the turnover of older families and younger families moving into single-family homes and some high-density buildings in the area, not only in the Creek Valley area, but other areas of Edina, will put more stress on our schools. Knowing that we have a deficit, this is not allowing us to really include any additional staff members to put some relief in the classrooms and ensure that all of our students thrive. So my questions are, based on the meetings, the budget meetings that were attended by some of the community members, when will we understand or know what some of those proposals or opportunities are that people did not want to lose, what the parents wrote on those little index cards at the end of the meeting? The second is, when will we understand what the impact is of the deficit and what actually is going to be affected? So when will that be known to the public? Another question that I have is, for the $4 million deficit that we know that we have, was this known or discussed during some public hearings for taxes payable in 2023? That was between November 25th and December 28th of 2022. If it was known, was it discussed there? And if it wasn't, or, you know, why did the public first hear about it then in January if there was maybe an opportunity to discuss that earlier? Another question is, were there any larger expenses that happened in the last fiscal year that are contributing to this deficit that we need to be thinking about for the future? And my last question is, in order to balance the budget, what are opportunities that we as passionate parents can do to help relieve this stress on our public school system? We understand that $7,000 per pupil of funding comes from the state of Minnesota with each student that our schools serve. However, the concern is that we don't have the space. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And just so you know, the information about budget alignment was presented at our work session tonight and is presenting again tonight, and it's in the board packet.
It is. Thank you.
Next up is Mark Hassan. Stop. I apologize for the pronouncement.
No worries.
It's written poorly, so it's not...
That's great. No, no problems. Good evening, everyone. Appreciate the time to be here today. Thought it was time I put a face and a body to all the emails I send you at midnight after these conversations. So it's an absolute pleasure to be here for that. So anyways, I have three items for three minutes today. I will be speaking about the Kids Club registration process, which I understand is on your docket for later in the evening. So the first thing, this is an issue of supply and demand. It appears that there is way too much demand for the supply, and I believe that that should be solved with increasing the wages to attract more people to work for Kids Club. I did some math based on the work session, work group session from the last meeting, and found out that there is 100% margin for Kids Club. That means that if you take in $100, it costs you 50, and you get to keep 50, that goes into the Edina community endowment. So I think it's a really good opportunity to increase the price. If you do it $3 a day, you can maintain the Edina community endowment, and you can raise the wage by 40%. $3 a day, you can give everyone that works at Kids Club a 40% raise. This is what I do for a living. I do financial modeling, and it's just kind of math's my thing, I guess. So that's number one. That would also help fix the deficit with a 100% margin, which is great, and you'll be able to fund those that can't afford. So that's number one that I'd really like you to do. I think that the prioritization process as designed is being a little defeatist, and you're kind of giving up on attracting more people by prioritizing and making levels for people based on a lottery, a computerized lottery, which isn't the way that I want to, you know, serve my children. Second, I want to encourage you to prioritize those in the Edina School District beyond those that are in open enrollment. I think that the open enrollment rules are stated that if someone's outside a district, they get a spot. If someone, if there's space, well, clearly, there's not space in the Kids Club program for those, there's not space for everyone in Edina, and there are people that live outside the school district that get in ahead of those that live in the school district. So I'd really like you to consider doing that for those that live here and vote for you. I certainly have voted for at least one of you here. Third, a little bit more input to the visibility for the participants in Kids Club. It seems like there's work group meetings, and there's like emails every couple months. We don't always get read in, and then there's kind of general statements, like, "We polled some people and asked them," and it's like, "Well, I don't know any of those people. I wasn't one of them." So it'd be better to hear a little bit more transparency from y'all, and I know it's busy, so you can only do so much. In closing, I want to thank you all because you are very responsive. Dr. Leland is just fantastic to work with. I may not always like what I hear from you, but I appreciate the access and the willingness to meet with me, and that is very amazing. Graham and Henry, love Ms. Jayla and Mr. Sean, who they've worked with in Kids Club in the past, and I just really want to advocate for them to have an opportunity to continue using that excellent service. So thank you for the time this evening.
Thank you. Next up is Owen Michelson.
Well, it is so nice to see you all. And Julie and I joke that my being up here for the second time in as many months is my attempt to go viral, so we'll see if that happens. Owen Michelson, former school board member. And I'm here for two reasons, the first of which is, I got to state how much free time I have now that I'm not on the board. It's just unbelievable. I looked at today's packet, and I glanced at it, and I glanced at it for 15 minutes, whereas I used to spend hours, as all of you do. So I want the viewing public to know how many hours a week everybody, all eight people up here, spend to be conscientious executors of the job of being a school board member. So thank you very much for that. In the hot seat on a lot of decisions, so thank you. The second reason I'm here is when I was on the board, we spent a lot of time talking about inclusion, and inclusion's a laudable goal. And this evening, later on, you'll be voting on the election proposal to have the city and you cooperate with running the elections in 2023. So that's sort of a fait accompli. That's going to happen. What I want to do is plant in your minds that when you consider the next election cycle, that you think about putting these on-cycle in the general election, on-even years, because it's much more inclusive. Off-cycle elections have between 40 and 20%. General elections almost always have 80% turnout. That's twice, at least twice as much. By definition, that's much more inclusive. Now inertia has its own ways. Habit has its own ways, and so the election will be in the fall of 2023. So, but I just want to plant a thought in your mind for the sake of inclusion to have the elections moved to on-cycle. So it's so nice to see your handsome, pretty mugs again. See you later.
Thank you. That is all for our speakers from the public. Thank you, everyone, for coming and sharing your thoughts with us. We are now going to move on to our consent agenda. Director Green is going to be abstaining from voting on our consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We will now vote to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. We're going to move on to our discussion items for tonight. First up is our Achievement and Integration Plan for 2024 to 2026. I'd like to invite up Dr. Randy Smazel. And do you have a special guest with you?
I have three special guests.
Oh, three. I'm glad I didn't introduce anyone.
So thank them to come up and join me. Maybe Sali, you can sit here, and Sarah and Victoria can sit over here.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Allenberg, Superintendent Stanley, our school board members, and our community members. Thank you for the time this evening to talk to you a little bit about achievement and integration. I want to start off by saying that the vision of Edina Public Schools is for each and every student to discover their possibilities and thrive. And if we key in on three words, each and every, that is what the Achievement and Integration Plan will allow us to pursue. So achievement and integration is a statute, and it's supported, it's a supportive program to pursue racial and economic integration, increase student achievement by reducing disparities and creating equitable opportunities. The plan is in alignment with district strategies, and it provides more power behind the strategies, in particular, to support our underserved scholars. I'm excited to be joined by Sali Ammar-Pakkar, who's one of our cultural liaisons, our South Asian Cultural Liaison. And then we have Sarah Hinson, who is one of our teachers of Avid over at the high school, and Victoria Moreau, who is a senior at Edina High School and also participates in the Avid class. So we'll give them a few minutes to speak in a second here. Next slide. Thank you. So what I'm going to show you is just really quickly a few highlights and details from the report. I'm not going to go over all of the report. For the community, there's a very detailed report around our plans around achievement and integration. There's four different goals and 10 strategies, and we'll highlight a few of those elements this evening, including our process around how we got there. So in the slides, you'll see a little brief introduction of some of the requirements from Minnesota Department of Education around achievement and integration plans. We are expiring our old plan, and the new plan goes across the next three years. So we would submit a three-year plan to MDE. I want to share a little bit about our process of gathering input and listening to others, our various stakeholders. And then in the report specifically, we list the different themes or our key learnings from those stakeholders. And then that plan has goals, strategies, and measurements of progress. So the first three-goal categories that are given to us from MDE are reducing academic disparities for underserved students, promoting integration in classes and programs, and diversifying their staff. And then they give us five strategy categories that we have to select from, and our goal is to just kind of Edinify all of those areas. So integrated learning environments, increasing family engagement, professional learning opportunities that raise academic learning, rigorous curriculum, and recruitment and retention of diverse staff, which includes teachers and administrators. And then the other part of the plan is to get some very specific indicators that indicate progress on implementation of the strategies, but also impact of those strategies. If you go to the next one. Thank you. So these are, this is a list of our groups that we got the opportunity to speak with. So we attended these meetings. We ran a start-stop-and-continue kind of conversation, talked about what's working, and gathered input from over 120 stakeholders to assemble this report. And again, many of the themes of those listening sessions are in the report. If you go to the next one. So four key goal areas. So just a high-level overview of these goal areas. The first one is success in gateway classes. So what are gateway classes? They're described in the School District Data Metrics Plan, and they really help us understand what are those powerful levers that create access for students in their future, whether they're going on to college, whether they're going on to career or just civic life. And those particular classes are specifically earning a certain letter grade in algebra before grade eight or in grade eight, getting a letter B, getting a letter B for a letter grade in biology, and a grade of a B in ELA, particular the U.S. Lit and Comp class in 11th grade, and then passing the Minnesota civics test. So what we know from past research is that these are key gateway benchmarks that create access and opportunity for learners. So monitoring really closely, in particular, our underserved learners, and their progress and access around those key gateway classes. I have FastBridge monitoring, which aligns with some of our other initiatives across the district, participation in advanced courses, and again, diversifying our work staff. To move on to the strategies, I'm going to highlight three of those. The first one is developing career pathways. So by career pathways, we're talking about alignment of experiences and courses with capstone opportunities. And those capstone opportunities could look like micro credentials, industry certifications, internships, apprenticeships. And by aligning those, what you're helping kids understand is how classes and experiences in school are a pathway to opportunities. And then on the back end is the opportunity to partner with our business world, our nonprofits, other organizations, the city of Edina, et cetera, to create these authentic experiences where students are able to apply their learning in new and novel situations and show that level of competency from all of the skills that they've gained through Edina Public Schools. We also have one around family engagement, and I think I'll turn it over to Sali to talk a little bit about the role of a cultural liaison around family engagement and maybe also around professional learning support in the school district.
Hello, everybody. So family engagement, basically, we view it as both-sided. So the families learn how to engage the school system, as well as we are getting the full cooperation, participation, and positive participation of families. So as you know, along with me, my team, we have Blanca, the Spanish-speaking liaison, Abdikader, the Somali liaison, and Albert, our equity specialist. And we work with everybody, right from 0 to 5 at YLC to K through 12 in the district. And so we work with students, we work with teachers, staff, admin, as well as parents. And so getting that piece of family engagement, whether it's translating materials or interpreting, whether it's consulting with families during various meetings, whether it's staff training about different cultures and cultural issues, and as I mentioned, that helping families navigate the school system, whether it's at the beginning of the school year, in the middle of the school year, or at the end of the school year. So I was just telling Rand, it's very hard to describe what we do because it's on such a spectrum. Do you want me to add anything else?
Okay. We have opportunity for questions at the end for follow-up. One of the other strategies that we describe in the Achievement and Integration Plan is a program we call AVID, Advancement Via Individual Determination. And who better to describe what it's like to be in AVID than one of our AVID students? So can I interview you? Is that okay? Okay, Victoria, here we go. So how would you describe the impact that AVID has had on you as a student in an AVID class?
Okay. I wrote notes because I'm very, very nervous. AVID has made a huge impact in my life. I started AVID in seventh grade because my friends were doing it. I thought it was just going to be another class. Boy, was I wrong. It became a community. It became a place where I can be myself. Edina, it's pretty hard just to be different than the norm of what you think. And in AVID, I don't have to be anyone other than myself. I can come in, and I know I'm accepted. I know if I, I don't get math very well. It's hard for me. I know I can go in, and I can talk to anyone, and they will help me to the best of their knowledge. There are multiple students who I know I could go to and be like, "Hey, it's not clicking my brain. I've gone to my teacher multiple times. He's not helping me. Can you help me?" And they will help me in a heartbeat. If I have a personal problem, I can come to my teachers, I can come to my fellow students in AVID, and it's really become a safe place and just a home inside of Edina High School. And it is so hard being a high school student going into college, and my AVID teachers have helped me get into college, helped me look for scholarships, helped me interview for my first jobs, helped me write my resume, helped me pay my taxes. Like, they have done everything under the sun for me, and it's all because of AVID. And it has opened so many doors for me, and it has changed my life in so many ways.
That was super powerful, and you did it all without notes. So I'm very, very impressed because I have my notes here that I can refer to. So the second question I'm going to ask you is, so what would you tell a younger student who's thinking about joining AVID? What would you, what would your advice to them be?
I wrote notes for this, too, but I'm not going to look at them. Actually, this is a personal story. My little sister is in AVID. She is ninth grade at Edina High School, and she did not want to do it. She hated it. She still does not want to do the class, but I tell her, "You have to stick with it." Like, my ninth-grade year was hard for me. I didn't want to do AVID either. I was like, "Oh, it's just another credit." But then as the years move on, you grow with the community, you build, and you create a family there, and you click with people. And I've had opportunities to meet people I would never talk to otherwise, and I just tell her, like, "You have to stick with it." And she's already met people that she would never talk to otherwise. And I know that when she, I know it's hard at first, especially because she wants to finish all her credits and then have a nice, clean schedule senior year. But if you take AVID and continue to take AVID, you will reap the benefits. AVID keeps you on top of your work. AVID gets you, this is going to sound kind of cliche, but it gets you money for college, like, good money for college, and it gets you good skills for college. It might suck at first, but if you stay with it, you will reap the benefits 100%.
Now, I think you should continue as a public speaker because you are very, very, very good, and we need to give you the microphone more. I'm going to turn it over to Sarah to talk a little bit about, as the teacher of AVID, what are some of the experiences that you've had? What do you, what do you see as the impact on a broader group of students? And anything else that you'd like to share with the board about this program that we use Achievement and Integration to fund, and so that's why we're doing these interviews?
I would just say that I've been working in AVID in Edina for over 10 years, and in that time, I've had the privilege of working with many students and walking them through their high school experience, helping to create a community to support them as they worked to be their best selves. I push them, we push them to do their best work, to develop skills for college, to push themselves. An expectation in AVID is that every student try at least one AP class at some point in their high school, and I, we're to the point, we might be able to say every, but we're certainly close to each and every student is doing that. We have four full cohorts at the high school, nine, 10, 11, 12. But I've also had the opportunity to watch them then. Our belief in AVID is that we're not just about getting into college, we're about getting out. And I, we have former Edina AVID students all over the metro in grad schools and law schools and working in public policy and doing all kinds of amazing things. These are students who are often the first in their family to go to college. And I think, I know they would say, because we just had a panel come back recently, but they would say that AVID and what they were able to do through AVID changed just the trajectory of their lives and sort of their family's lives. So it's been amazing to be a part of and watch, and we're definitely helping students navigate a system that doesn't always feel welcoming or open to them and go all the way through with it.
I had the pleasure of sitting down with Sarah and doing about an hour-long interview with her about the impacts, and I will say, I was blown away by all the examples that you shared. And then I had the opportunity to come in and do a focus group in the classroom. And we're talking, when we're talking about things that are working in terms of reducing disparities, I came away from that focus group so impressed that I said to Sarah, "We have to have at least one, at least one of the students come speak to the board." Thank you. Next slide, please. So we'll skip this one because I already spoke to that in terms of some of the key indicators, and just briefly say that we are able to access about $1.3 million worth of revenue when we have an approved plan. That approved plan is a two-part process. It's first approved by the board, then approved by the Minnesota Department of Education. You have a list of some general budget expenditures. One of the items that I do want to share that I haven't really talked about yet is that we partner with Hopkins in doing some of this work, and so we'll be running a summer AVID Bridge Experience with Hopkins, and we've been doing that for a while. And it's a great opportunity to learn from each other, to share staff, to share students, and create some very unique experiences. The last budget slide will share that some of the budget expenditures are for indirect services, for professional learning, and for oversight. And with that, we'll turn it back to the board to see what questions you have.
Thank you very much. Board members, Director Burman.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I'm curious, given their last number, which is the budget, $1.3 million, so that is what's allocated for this. What would the actual demand be for everyone who'd be eligible to be in the AVID program, who would want to be in the AVID program? What would we need in order to fulfill that?
I might ask Sarah. I don't, I don't, we have certainly seen growing enrollment in AVID. We started a few years ago with a ninth-grade elective class, and then a 10th and 11th, and now it's in all four grade levels, and those are very full sections at those different grade levels, and it really has created some sustainability to it from the standpoint of how many kids are participating. Any idea, Sarah, how much other demand is out there? What would you say about that?
I don't know. I really don't. But we've grown. I mean, I don't even know, like, seven, eight years ago, I kind of thought it was going to fall apart. We were doing, and now, all of a sudden, it really has exploded, and it's, I don't, I have kids coming to me all the time asking me now how to get in AVID. So I don't know. I don't know how to quantify it, though.
Let me ask it a different question. Yeah, I appreciate that. If you don't mind, let me just ask, I'll clarify my question. Is it fair to say that we do not have enough spots for everyone who might want to be in AVID is able to get into AVID today in any grade level that we're offering it?
Thus far, we have been creating sections based on numbers of students who have registered.
So we are meeting then the demand at this point?
We are.
Are there any limitations or hurdles that prevent us from growing to whatever the demand eventually would be? Can we, is there, I'm just trying to future plan ahead. Are there any limitations or concerns that I would want to be aware of? Because this program, listening to the student, but listening to the other presentations we've had over the last year about AVID, it sounds like an incredible program that we're being quite successful with as far as dealing with a number of different strategic initiatives that we have. I just want to make sure that then we have the ability, the capacity, to deliver to the students who identify with it, that we're able to offer it to them.
Well, I will just say that we are, we have, well, we have full groups at each grade level, and I would say, if we go beyond where we are right now, we're going to need additional staffing, period. Our 12th-grade section has nearly 40 students in it. I'm in there, and other teachers in there, Albert McGee's in there often, and we could still, it's so much, there's so much going on, there's so much support that's necessary in a complex school system, and then the college system, which has gotten so difficult. And so I think we're maxed. That's what I'll say right now. But I'm not sure where that's going to go in terms of enrollment.
Okay. And then the last question, if you don't mind me, just as a catalyst to that, is that given the fact that we're coming out of COVID, and we have so many issues that kind of were created with COVID, this is where I'm trying to get from the demand-opportunity process of, we're maxed at where we are today, but AVID might be a great program that could certainly help with the issues that COVID might have introduced, especially at the middle school level, going into high school? I'm just trying to like, at least identify, not answering it, but just identifying, is this another potential solution if we were able to provide capacity for it? If you have an opinion on that, great. If not, it's just an open-ended question. Thank you.
Certainly, the programming in AVID does a lot to build executive function in kids, and we know that executive function was something that was affected in kids because of COVID, so it is an opportunity for doing that. And then going back to your previous question, one of the things that's exciting now is that the sections that we're seeing in Avid are really self-sustainable from the numbers of kids that we have in there. When we first started Avid, we had low enrollment sections. And so we supported those sections with some additional FTE. And we're seeing that that's just continuing to grow, and legs are coming under the table.
Director Green?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. It was great. Thank you. Victoria, right? That's her name? Outstanding. I have a question about the money piece. So if we get $1.3 million from the state, right? Because this is a legislate... This is... We have to do this, right? This is by law. If our... If there is a need, kind of what Director Burman said, if there is a need that grows, does that money grow according to how many are enrolled? Or is it the type of... Or are we evaluated by the type of program that we have?
Yeah, it is tied to the student population that we have. So different factors of the student population then help calculate the money. And so we're predicting about $1.3 million going into next year.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
But it might increase over time.
Got it. That makes more sense. Okay. Thanks.
Director Shaw?
I just have a comment. Victoria, you did awesome. And I don't think any of my fellow board members will disagree with me. I cannot wait. We cannot wait to celebrate with you on June 5. And we will. We promise we will. So thank you.
Director Neville?
Yes, and mine is also just a brief comment. I want to thank you, Victoria, for sharing beautifully what that experience has been for you. And I want to thank Sarah and Sylee for your work with all of the students and families you serve. I've had the opportunity to participate with Avid to a certain extent, just a sliver of all of the depth that you are providing. And I know it makes an impact in our community. Thank you.
Director Gabler?
I echo the thank-yous for coming and speaking to us tonight. And I think, as we are looking at our budgeting process and knowing that we have some success in some of the programs that fall under this, and knowing that, you know, Sylee, when you were talking about all the things that fall under your role, being aware of the capacity. And so, you know, if we have... Just keeping that in mind as we're moving towards budgeting, and hopefully, a state process where we might see some more funding. You know, it sounds like we have a lot of success stories coming out of Avid, and so making that an opportunity. And also our cultural liaisons, which have pretty full plates, just making sure that we're supporting them in their work. So, thank you.
I think that's all. Thank you, guys, so much. And thank you. Thank you, Victoria, for coming and speaking to us. Appreciate it. Next up, we have Dr. Anne Marie Leland and Julie Gabrielson with the 2023 Kids Club Registration Process.
Good evening, Chair Superintendent Stanley and Directors. My name is Dr. Anne Marie Leland, and with me today, I have the fabulous Julie Gabrielson, Coordinator of Operations and Facilities. Thank you for joining tonight. We're both going to talk through, again, the process around Kids Club registration. As we presented a few weeks ago at a work session, we wanted to give you an update a little bit on... I think there's actually no changes to the slides, other than just one piece of information we added around some families that are CCAP or Child Care Assistance Program eligible. And that's about it. So we're just going to go through the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here. So just very briefly, I'll go through the background and how we got to where we are, and then dive into the process and priority levels. So it was about a year ago when we opened registration for Summer 2022 and for our current school year for school-age care. And we had always used a first-come, first-served registration process. Last year, our online system crashed due to high demand, and many families were left frustrated and couldn't submit their contract request, and therefore had little to no chance of getting into after-school care this year. Through that learning, we learned that many families were frustrated, and they were asking for change and for more transparency in how we accept Kids Club contracts. So we've worked to create a new system that is fair and impartial for families while also remaining administratively manageable. Starting with our feedback process, we gathered feedback from families, community members, internal partners, other community ed departments in the metro and across the state, and gathered all that feedback and put together a new process. So jumping into that actual contract acceptance protocol, we'll start by giving families a two-week window to request a contract. Contracts, as they come in, will be assigned a priority level, and based on their qualifications. And that contract priority will be given as long as the contract is requested during that established two-week window. Once that two-week window closes, contracts will be accepted by priority level, level by level. And then, if we look at our contracts, and there have been more contracts requested than what space will allow, we'll use a randomized computer lottery with no preference for the date that the contract was requested. Just a few points of clarification. Contracts must be requested each subsequent season. Once one student has their contract requested or contract accepted, all students in a family or within a childcare account will be accepted. Any contract that isn't approved initially will be held on a waitlist for consideration as space becomes available. And then, any contracts that are requested after that initial two-week window will be added to the bottom of the waitlist, regardless of their priority qualifications, with one exception for newly hired district employees. So these are our priority levels. The first priority being students of district employees. The second is students who receive childcare financial assistance, including county childcare assistance, Edina Give 'N Go, or community ed childcare assistance. In the current school year, we have eight families who would qualify at that level, six of whom reside in Edina. Priority three is students entering kindergarten up to a predetermined number at each site. That predetermined number would be in ratio with kindergarten enrollment at that site. And then, any students, any kindergarteners not accepted at that priority three get rolled into their next highest level. Priority four is those siblings of kindergarteners who were accepted in the priority three. And priority five is for students who requested a contract in the respective previous season. So for Summer 2023, that would be any students who requested a contract in Summer 2022. For school year 23, 24, that would be any students who requested a contract for the current school year. And that's regardless of whether the contract was accepted or remained on the waitlist. So just by asking for one. And then, priority six would be all other students. So kind of in summary, this is just the timeline of where we've been, to where we are, to where we're going. Looking back, really, this process started in July, gathering feedback, working to build a new registration process. As Dr. Leland said, we were with you in January. And since then, we've spent our time sharing the new process with families, making sure that they know what to expect, that there's no surprises. Tomorrow at 8:00 AM, our contract request window for summer opens for two weeks, and then we'll work through processing that. And on March 28 at 8:00 AM, we'll open up a two-week contract request window for next school year, before we begin processing those contracts.
Thank you very much, Julie. That was great. And we are just here to answer any questions that you have about the process.
Thank you for coming back and presenting that to us and the rest of the community. And do board members have questions? Director Green?
Sure. Hi, thanks. I just have a quick question. Can you just talk briefly about the process of, once you are accepting the contracts, where... How high can we go? And how do you determine how high we can go in terms of acceptance? Because I know it has a lot to do with staffing, but if you could give just a little bit of background on that, be helpful. Thanks.
Yep. So what my counterpart, who oversees the Kids Club program, does is, they have been surveying current staff to see what their intentions are for summer and next school year. We also know from history about how many new staff members we can hire. And so that's a mathematical game that they know, not game, but process that they know to best predict how we will be staffed for summer and then for next school year. And then, we'll determine the number of contracts we can accept. You know, we kind of look at where those kids fall, on which days, and determine, can we accept more? And so it's really not like a one-and-done type of thing. We'll accept as many contracts as we can, look at what we have, look at how staffing is coming along, and continue to accept more contracts, you know, until everybody's being served.
Great. Thank you. And one other just follow-up question. So some of the incentives that were put in place for hiring are still in place as we move through to the next school year, correct?
So we have sunsetted the incentive program. As we tried lots of different things this fall to recruit staff, and we kind of, as we looked at them, we saw what worked and what didn't work to get staff in. The incentive program didn't seem to be the thing that was drawing new staff members in. And so we did sunset that program.
Okay. Thank you. But the increase is still there.
The pay increase, yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Director Arum?
I think that answered my question. I was asking if you're going to keep the incentives for... If you had a chance to evaluate whether or not, like, the students, the high school students and whatnot, was going to be impactful enough to keep it for next year?
So the Education Career Pathway, that course is available to students and was great, and we loved our high school students, the staff.
So you'll keep that? I guess I was thinking that was an incentive program. If that's not classified as an incentive program, then...
No, I believe it's actually in the course catalog for high school for next year, and students will be able to sign up for that again. They've been some of our best employees, so we're definitely keeping that option open for students. And that's part of our intent around building career pathways as well.
Director Shaw?
Thank you both for that presentation. Thanks for your work on this, Julie. I appreciate it. I did want to make a comment also in appreciation. I think it's important to recognize that there is such great demand because it is such a great program, right? Like, Edina's really lucky, and we're somewhat unique in that there is this demand from, you know, a spectrum of families that want this care. So thank you for your work to try to create a space for every student and every family that wants it. So I just want to acknowledge that. And I just... I've heard a few comments that I... And I think this is going to be very obvious, but just for the sake of saying it and for their community to hear it, it is the intention that we will try to serve every student that we can, that there isn't... We are not trying to restrict, but we are trying to serve every student we can to the best capacity that we can with staffing and space and all of that stuff. So I've heard it said that we're trying to cap it, and I don't think that... I want to just have us say it out loud. That's all.
No, thank you for that clarification. You're correct. We're not trying to cap the program. We're not trying to cap enrollment. It really is about getting employees hired and staffed appropriately in terms of ratio for students.
Director Burman?
Thank you very much. I think the question I would have for you is that when we do the March enrollment period for the fall, and we get all the two-week requests of contracts, and we'll get a bulk of them at that time, I would assume, and we realize that, oh, we do not have enough staff to be able to serve everybody, then you guys will continue to work innovatively to figure out how to find the staff necessary so that we can meet every request that is pro to us, assuming that we have the space capacity to address that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the key thing from my expectation is, we're going to come back and discuss all the different options that are then available to you, and you're going to keep trying to see if we can crack that nut, to figure that out. And we'll know in March, unlike what we saw in this fall, we're going to get a good idea of what the demand is going to be. Because I know there's discussion over this past year, where we just seen a one-time huge situation coming out of COVID, or was it going to go back to historical patterns, or is this now going to be the norm? We will know those answers once we get through the registration process. But then we'll be able to identify what that need is, and then figure out where we want to go with that.
Excellent point. There's really no trend data because of COVID. So that it will be our first year in being able to look back and compare what we have in terms of enrollment coming into March. So again, thank you so much for that clarification and acknowledgement.
Director Gabler?
I echo. Thank you for coming back and speaking to us about this. I have... If you could, could we go back in the slides to look at the priorities? This has been an interesting process to walk through, and I'm really interested to see what this next go-around does produce. Like Director Burman was talking about, I think we will have a better idea after we see if these changes were... You know, we've changed the pricing for incentives. We've looked at a lot of things over the past year to hopefully improve the process. I am wondering if, with these priorities, because I think there is a little bit of confusion out there, can you speak to priority three and four? How you came to those decisions, what that means for families? Because it might not be clear by reading that slide.
Yep. So the intent of priority number three is to really level the playing field for kindergartners who haven't had the opportunity to request a contract in previous years. So it's really taking those kindergartners and allowing a portion of them to get that priority five access. So it's not about, you know, trying to guess who is in more need of care, but leveling the playing field when it comes to accessing registration. So we'll look at kindergartners, at least in January, made up 16% of our elementary enrollment. So when we look at each specific site, we would say, okay, we're going to make sure that at least 16% of our Kids Club enrollees are also kindergartners, and give them that priority three access.
Thank you. Because I think that was a really important part, is that it's in proportion to the number of students that they are in a student building. So if you're... It's not going to be Kids Clubs just full of kindergartners.
Right. Right. They're almost as though it's replacing the outgoing fifth graders.
Perfect. And then I think just going forward, you know, as I said, in the next... Once we kind of see, first of all, how summer goes, because I think that might be a precursor of what to expect for when the school year goes forward. But we know we're the only show in town. We know demand is going up. And so, once we have more of this data, I'll be really interested to know if we can fiddle with more of this information, because... More of the levers. We still do run a pretty good product for the price that we charge. And so I'd be interested to kind of know if that's something that we can look at. So, down the road.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next up, we have Teaching and Learning Director Jody D. St. Hubert with our K- to 5 Science Curriculum Adoption Recommendation. Enmark Carlson, and Britt Thies, and a bunch of other people that I can't remember their names, and Kristin Green. And I apologize to everyone else. A wonderful teaching staff that's here.
Good evening, Dr. Stanley, Chair Allenberg, and rest of the board members. Thanks for having us here this evening to talk a little bit about elementary science curriculum adoption. We were here at the board work session a few weeks back and shared a little bit about the process, about some of the rationale. And really, what I want you to hear tonight is more from the teachers. So I brought a lot of people with me. All of these teachers have been a part of this process over the many years that we've been going through it. So we have Britt Thies from Creek Valley, Michael Smith from Cornelia, Kristin Green, who's been in a leadership role here with Cornelia as a dean. We have Alyssa Barnes, and we have Allison Knopf. Alyssa is from Countryside, and Allison is from Concord. And they're just going to share a little bit about their passion, about their experiences so far with mystery science, and what their... and what they're, they're seeing with that process. So I'm just going to turn it over to them and I'm going to sit back and we'll take questions at the end.
Mark, do you mind really fast, before you turn it over, for people that this might be brand new to?
Sure.
That didn't listen to our work session. Could you just give like a two-sentence overview of the recommendation you're making and why our teachers love it so much?
Certainly, I would be happy to. So we, we are recommending the purchase of Mystery Science for our K-5 curriculum. It is a, it's a online-based curriculum that is very flexible. It's very in alignment with the NGSS or the National Standards for Science and the Minnesota Science Standards as well. It really is a, a program that we feel strongly is also can be a backbone for development of STEAM as we go forward as well. So we really feel like it is something that is, is going to be a really good structure for us going forward in science to kind of replace our science curriculum from the 1990s. So that's, I hope that's enough.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, we'll pass it to the teachers. Some further background might be that this has been a fairly long process. It was interrupted multiple times due to the last few years. And so the team started a handful of years ago, really digging into what our current science curriculum resources are and what these new standards are going to look like. And it is a dramatic shift in how students engage in science. And so really, we worked hard to ensure teachers can understand what phenomena-based science is, what it sounds like, and what they will be doing investigating. They will be doing so much more of the thinking and questioning and investigating with science. And so our goal was first to lay that foundation of understanding the standards. And then we were charged with, so how are they going to do this? And that's where this team looked at many different resources and found that Mystery Science is our best recommendation for really moving forward with next-generation thinkers in science. And these teachers sitting at the table here tonight have dabbled in it. They have jumped in with both feet and the excitement that you will hear when they talk about Mystery Science, when they talk about what their kids are doing, that is what we want you to know about the resource that we have found to really be what we hope to be the best choice for our students moving forward with science. So the experts can talk now.
Oh, I get to go first. Yay! All right. Well, I have been teaching in Edina since 1996. And I've been using the same science curriculum since 1996. And so, which is, it's been wonderful and it's been great to use. But what I have found with Mystery Science is that my students, it provides an opportunity for my students to really engage and communicate and collaborate and ask themselves, why are we learning this? And trying to figure out the answer together. And Mystery Science, as you know, is an online-based science curriculum that provides many different mediums for kids to learn. It provides videos, photographs that are current. For first grade, it provides read-alongs. It highlights the text for them. And it, it, it is self-paced, so it provides an opportunity for us to stop and think and talk together and work on these collaborative sheets that make them talk about what they see, what they think, and what they wonder. And I have, we just did a little activity about what do I love about first grade? And so many of my students said, because I get to do science. And that has been a first, to see so many students so excited about science. The materials, I know it is an investment, but the materials that we used were very minimal, things that we can find in the classroom. But I have seen students, we did a lesson on sound, vibrations, light, everything. And it connected everything back to an alligator whose throat vibrated. And everything we were learning went right back to, okay, now let's bring it back to the alligator. And we did rulers and we flipped them and they could hear it vibrating. And they came up with, you know, everything that made sound vibrates and it all got connected back to this visual that they could see, the alligator's throat vibrating. And so it really reached all of my students, my ML students, my special ed students. It was very relatable to everyone and it got everybody having genuine and really great conversations around science. And I love teaching it. I think it's great to think about the students, but it is fun to teach and it's fun to see these kids get so excited. So, yeah.
Thank you, Britt. Thank you, Dr. Stanley, and thank you for inviting us back. We had a brief presentation at the work session a while ago and I appreciate all your comments. We are excited about this curriculum, really this resource. The curriculum and our standards, and this aligns so well with those standards. And kids get excited about it. And as teachers use it and I'm, and what really speaks to me about this, about this program is how it went through COVID with all the distance teaching and how we, I could still deliver science instruction to my students at home. It wasn't perfect. We didn't have all the things we need, but we were able to create little take-home kits that parents could get and they could do these things at home. I'm really looking forward to this possibly being adopted by the district because I think it's really effective. Students are excited and every teacher that, that encounters it really gets, are, gets excited almost immediately. And that excitement carries over to our students. And so that's a really powerful thing. And today, we did a, we did a lesson on, you know, how does the heart work in relation to Valentine's Day? We did our friendship parties last week and they were fabulous. But, you know, this is what a normal, normally a heart, it doesn't really look like that. It looks like this. And kids were super engaged. And they wrote a Valentine's card to their heart and saying, thank you, about how it works. But we were, we had paper that we were, that they were crunching and count their heartbeats. We found our pulse. We had discussions about, during our lesson, about what the heart does and what they thought it did. And it was, it's just really engaging. And having, seeing kids have genuine discussions around science phenomena is what should be happening. And this really allows that to, to, to move forward. So it's exciting. So I'll turn it, I'll pass the mic. So thank you for listening again.
Good evening. I will echo everything that Britt and Michael shared. We are so excited to finally bring Mystery Science to you all. We've been working on this for years and years and years and we are just, we are so, we're giddy, if you can't tell, that we're at this point and we're piloting it with our classrooms and our students are loving it. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Countryside and we, my students truly believe they are scientists. And I think that is so much thanks to Mystery Science and the hands-on inquiry-based phenomena, the discussion that we're having. They walk away from each lesson truly knowing that they are a scientist. We just got done with the wild weather unit and it's all about different types of severe weather and how you prepare for the weather. And they had lots of great connections to blizzards, but we also learned about hurricanes and we had learned about tornadoes. And the students, every single morning, would come in and I can think of one student in particular that said, are we doing that weather science today? And he was so engaged, he couldn't wait for it. And one just little story, we, in our class, our, our curriculum for literacy, part of it is making meaning. And every single week, we do a little recording on Seesaw with one of our, our answers to a making meaning question. And last week was all about occupations and careers in nonfiction, specifically doctors and zookeepers. And after our little lesson, they went back to their spot and they recorded themselves of what would be a career that they would want to follow for a day, just like we kind of followed the zookeeper for the day. And 14 out of 24 of my students all said that they would want to follow a scientist because they would get to learn about the animals, they get to learn about the weather and they're so, they're so engaged and just in love with it. We can't wait to, to hopefully share this even further.
So piggybacking on a lot of what was already said, I'll try and introduce some other pieces. One of the things that the kids repeatedly say or mention is Mystery Doug in that he is the catalyst for delivering the information. And frequently you'll hear them, when the video Mystery Doug said, and I truly think they think Mystery Doug is a friend. I mean, he has that kind of connection when he comes through. But it's amazing how many times kids will refer back to him. So clearly he's making an impact. I think it also has to do with the way he and the curriculum ask questions. They ask questions the way kids ask questions. So I think that automatically makes them feel like peers, like scientists with the curriculum and the presentation of it. As a fifth-grade teacher, as we delve deeper into some content, I think it's also very forward-thinking to have a curriculum that will continually update without having, not being tied to a textbook in some way that will stay static for the next 10 years or however long we would have this curriculum. We have already, we see it in real time that Mystery Science is updating new lessons. The lesson is slightly different than it was five months ago when we looked at it. So that, I, I appreciate that, that I will always feel like I have the most current and best information regarding content. I think they're, they've been very receptive. They seem to be receptive and the things, changes they're making seem to be coming from suggestions from their users, teachers such as us. And so that kind of responsiveness, I think, from the curriculum developers is also a huge selling point for us. So.
So we'd like to open for any questions, if you have any.
Board members? Director Neville?
Just a quick comment, and I shared part of this with most of you at the workshop session. It is truly one of the most fun sections of a board packet that I've had the pleasure of reading through. I love the examples, love the, the hyperlinks. But I want to applaud all of you for the rigorous research that all of you did to try to discern what is the best program for Edina Public Schools and for finding something that really aligns with STEAM, which is consistent with the district's goals. It's not just good with STEM. It's really bringing the arts into STEAM, which is part of the district goal. I think you've just knocked it out of the park. Thank you.
Director Green?
Yeah, I echo Director Neville, her comments. Can, I, I asked this in the work session, but I think it would be worth talking about again. Can you talk just a little bit about how this curriculum builds for going, the kids going into middle school?
Sure. So it, it really is align, it really comes down to the standards and its alignment through the standards. So if we think about the way NGSS is laid out, it's, it's, it's three-dimensional and that will, that will go throughout, starting from kindergarten all the way through high school. And as, as we look at the three dimensions, it, it really kind of lays out for teachers what it should look like in K-2, what it should look like in 3-5, 6-8, and 9-12. So teachers can look through, in fact, some of the PD that we're going to be doing next week will be around that development. How does it look like in my 3-5 range? And then how will it look in 6-8? So that I make sure that what I'm teaching now is going to align with what they're going to need next year or next few years when they're in middle school or high school. So there is that alignment through the way they've developed the standards overall. And then this is super-aligned with those standards as well.
Thank you. That's fantastic. It will be very fun to see the data years from now on the impact that this has on our kids when they hit the high school. So I don't know if I'll still be on the board then, but it'll be a while. Director Arum?
Thanks for your persistence with keeping this going. When you presented, it was, I forgot how many years you all said it was, but it's been a long time. I had two questions. One is related to just the difference in the way, in the model of teaching. Like, is it focused more on like group learning or is it compared to what previously was done? And then second, do you think there's, I don't know if we've talked about it at all, but the opportunity to align when it comes to like the future internships and some of the micro-certifications and whatnot that we're hoping for in 2027 was the target, right? You know, is there something we can do to align with that from a board perspective or a committee?
Yeah, so as we think about, if, if we think about the elementary years, it's really going to be about building the base so that they can kind of start making their movement towards those things and excitement, exactly. So I, I think that it aligns with that. I don't know that we're going to be talking about micro-codenturing at, at, you know, the K-2 or 3-5 level. But, but it will kind of set that base for them to be able to, to do some of that work later on. I'm, I'm sorry, what was the first part of your question?
Oh, the first part was just about just the, the way that it's taught. Is it, is it significantly different because it's group versus individual?
Yeah, so if we, if we think about the way these new standards have been developed with this three-dimensional approach, olds, the, the way we used to teach science was much more about information, more, I think, you, you've hit it every time. It's, it was trivial pursuit science, whereas this is really more about being a scientist and investigating science from the, from the eyes of the child as opposed to from the, the vantage point of what do I need to know for this test? So it's really a much more of a scientist approach to, to the, to the learning of science.
Director Shaw?
I have a comment and a question. My comment is, thank you, once, as everybody has said, for sticking with this. I'm sure you guys have spent years just waiting to see the FOSS boxes go. And this is very exciting and I know that it'll free up some space and the black and white boxes will go. Been there, seen it. My question has to do with the updating. Can you talk a little bit about how that dynamic updating works? Is that, is there, is there a set cadence of when the curriculum gets updated or is it just as needed?
It's a really good question. So it is, it is something that's updated on a regular basis. But what they do do is, let's say that we have a lesson that we want to do and they've updated that lesson. And if you're ready for the, the old lesson and they put a new one in, they still have the link to the old lesson. So we have the opportunity to go back and, and do that one. So if that's something that I have a, a passion around, that's still there, they don't get rid of it. But they do say, here's what, here's what it is now. If you want the old one, here's the old one here.
Thank you. Listening to that, helped me understand, given that you all represent different buildings in elementary school, would, would a student be kind of, in the programming of the curriculum, see the same things in each second-grade level regardless of what building that they're in then? Given the fact that you have this adaptability and so and so forth, I'm just wondering, is it more teacher-driven or is it more kind of at a higher level driven as far as what's going to be provided?
It's a really good question. So we, we will provide a scope and sequence for the district as a whole. So if a student were at Cornelia and moved from Cornelia to, say, Concord, they would be in the same place generally. So we, we are, one of the things that we have to make sure that we do to make sure that science is strong is that we have an oversight or, or just a general scope and sequence that we know is being followed across the district. And that's something that we'll, we'll be overseeing from a teaching and learning standpoint.
Great, thank you. And then the only other comment I was going to have is I really love what you said, is that the, the programming that you're experiencing with this is not only great for your, you know, all, it's for all students, you said. You said it was for your, you know, ML students and your special services students and so and so forth. That to me, really, with all of your excitement, the whole point about our vision about making sure we're, we're getting every student and getting their possibilities and thrive, that's really, when you see a curriculum kind of coming into something new, how does it deliver on that promise? And so that was, so I really appreciated you acknowledging that.
Director Gabler?
Thank you. I've had the opportunity to see this a couple of times, so I've had my questions answered. But I wanted to ask one of Alyssa, is it really the 100th day of kindergarten today?
Yes and no. It's supposed to be tomorrow. However, with our snow day, we had already sent out our parent volunteer signups and we have, at Countryside, we do a big day of service tomorrow. So it would have been a little much to do both on the same day. So we counted the snow day and then we kept going, so we did celebrate day 100 today.
Got it. Do you only wear that sweatshirt once a year?
Only once a year. Yes, yes.
Any other questions? Well, I just wanted to thank you guys and as a, one that's dissected Al pellets three times with my kids and their teachers, I wish this would have been implemented 15 years ago. But thank you very much. This is great work, so. And it will be up for action next month. So, yeah, maybe we'll get to see you again. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our District Equity and Inclusion Plan Board Update with Dr. Randy Smousel and Director Jody D. St. Hubert.
Well, that is, it's fun to be here and present after hearing that excitement around our science that's, that's ahead of us and, and the connections that that has to all, so many of our pathways and and strategic plan work. And I'm here now to talk about our District Equity and Inclusion Plan. So, good evening, Chair Ellenberg, Dr. Stanley, board members, community members. I want to introduce clearly, Dr. Smuzzel, Assistant Superintendent is here with me today, and also our South Asian liaison, Siz. I know that, and I was trying to focus on your last name, Sily. Amarak Pukar is here with us as well. So we're excited to have you here and highlighting the important work that we're doing. Our Edina District Equity and Inclusion Plan aligns with Strategy B in identifying areas of focus that will help with the attainment of an equitable and inclusive school climate. One area of focus is CPSS, Culturally Proficient School Systems. CPSS is a framework that consists of a set, consists of a set of four tools. CPSS was originally founded by Terry Cross, and we have specifically been working with Dr. Trudy Ariaga. Dr. Ariaga has been working with us to help build our knowledge, our understanding, and our implementation planning on CPSS. Dr. Ariaga is a collaborator and Senior Associate of the Center for CP, Culturally Proficient Educational Practices. Over the last, or over, looking forward and looking ahead, over the next several years, our Edina goal is to have all Edina staff, no matter what their role, trained in the tools of culturally proficient school systems, as well as operating a high level of implementation. We have outlined that in the report, and the details of that are there. I also want to highlight that over the last year, we have had 99 staff members trained in the tools of culturally proficiency. Dr. Ariaga has trained this first round of 99 staff members in what we call Cohort A and Cohort B. And Dr. Ariaga has worked with 19 Edina staff members to become trained facilitators so that they have the skills and knowledge and to help continue the training for all the other staff in Edina Public Schools. We just had our first session with our trained facilitators leading that last week. Sily was a huge part of that and some of her teammates, and it was extraordinary. Dr. Ariaga was there and so did a debrief with us after each session, and so having her support is really integral in the work. The next component that's really integral is the implementation, right? It's one thing to learn the knowledge and have the conversations and engagement and what the framework consists of, and the next important step is implementation. So we're really excited that we have a symposium coming April 21st, which will be here before we know it, for Cohort A and B staff that have been trained. And at that symposium, they're going to take an up, they're going to have an opportunity to talk to their colleagues about how they have implemented their learning into their day-to-day work and their systems to ensure each and every student in Edina is able to discover their possibilities and thrive. We will continue to bring updates on the training to you as a board and that impact of that on our system. I don't want to go over everything in the report, but there were a lot of fun highlights within the report on the impact that we are already seeing it have on students, whether it's day-to-day observations that we're seeing, systems that we're trying to change in terms of opening up doors and making sure there are not barriers, as well as some educational data points that are in there to highlight, to highlight the impact. And the other component of our report is for Dr. Smuzzel to highlight on one of our critical advisory groups.
Thank you, Jody. One of the pieces I do want to call attention to is just this idea of one of the tools in that framework is about overcoming barriers. And what's significant about that is that it helps people really dig into what are some of the root causes of the barriers? And how do we really understand those so we can figure out what are the solutions? And that's what that framework really helps you dig into. And again, as Jody mentioned, there are some examples of that impact, but one that I just want to take a moment to highlight is speaking to some of our FastBridge assessment data. And so if you are looking at Table 1, we have students in grades K-1, and the graph monitors growth as flat, modest, typical, and aggressive. What would be typical to see in the aggressive growth, the bars on the far right, would be a 25 or 30% gain. So if we look at K-1, we are seeing 41% hitting aggressive growth, so way past the typical bar. That's for all. If we're looking at multilingual learners, 37%. Again, far past what we would see as typical, and students with IEPs, 37%. If you go down to the next table in grade 9 through 10, look at multilingual learners at 45%. That's across grades 2 through 9. Looking at students with IEPs, 31%. There's some great celebrations in our academic data, and what's so powerful about this and doing this work around the tools is we are unpacking barriers across the district, unpacking root causes. And I think it's a great example of how our work in this cultural proficiency framework is lifting learning by removing barriers. So we just wanted to highlight that for a moment. As Jody mentioned, we have a group that we started about a year and a half ago called the District Equity Advisory Committee. The District Equity Advisory Committee is, consists of teachers, parents, admin, our cultural liaisons, we have an alumni that's on the committee, and we've had students in the past. And this year, we haven't had such good attendance from the students, so we're going to continue to work on that. But one of the things that the District Equity Advisory Committee does is they, they provide a platform for discussion about equity issues or equity concerns across the district. I love this quote that Dr. Ariaga has used in her training, that diversity is a fact, equity is a choice, inclusion is an action, and belonging is the outcome. It's why we're here, for each and every to feel like they belong so that they can thrive, right? And so this particular committee is focused on having conversations and thinking about recommended actions to advise back to administration that will help move our district forward. In particular, one of the things that we've really focused work around is providing some feedback back to Policy Committee around specific policies. So in the report, we reference six different policies that we have spent time in six separate meetings going into great depth and detail about what about this policy could we move a little further to the right on our equity continuum, and what suggestions or improvements might we provide around that? And then bringing that, again, back to staff who are responsible for different policies that come back to the Policy Committee. But I would also like to maybe have Sily speak a little bit about DEAC, and you're a member of DEAC, you've been on here, you help do the planning for the committee, so maybe you could share a couple highlights.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. So as Dr. Smuzzel said, DEAC consists of all the different stakeholders, basically. So we have teachers, staff, cultural liaisons, we have students, parents. And we have tried to include parents from different cultural groups, so to say, that are represented in Edina. And each time they're given the policy and some questions to go with it as to how they can review it. And we have had some very authentic feedback, like, for example, this last week, we talked about how we are going to bring equity to policy review process, and so there were a lot of good ideas that came about both the process as well as the content, how to review it from an equity perspective, especially to make it culturally proficient. So there has been, like, there have been good discussions, and it's a good platform to let, especially the parents and students, to weigh in on things that they usually don't get a chance to weigh in on. And we have had some good discussions.
Thank you, Sily. So DEAC is one of the elements in our DEI plan of trying to elevate voice and honor voice across the district. And as Jody mentioned, the other element that we were describing was the training around CPSS. And so we just wanted to bring a couple of highlights of some of the work that we're doing across the district in those two arenas, professional development, elevating voice, and share a little bit of that this evening with the board. And with that, we'll turn it back to the board for questions.
Board members? Director Arum?
Just a general question or your opinion. Do you think that, and I'll probably get the risk of stink eye from this, but would it be worthwhile to have board representation on DEAC as well as another subcommittee of the board? We've talked about in our retreats about different ways to outreach to different groups and hearing different voices from different areas outside of PLC and some other things like that that are kind of more traditional. And so I'm wondering if there's, if you think it'd be worthwhile to have a board presence?
Well, we always appreciate the voices of the board. And if it were my decision, I don't know that it is, so we would honor that, but I think that's a great suggestion. And so if that happens, we will welcome each and every one of you with open arms.
Great answer. Any other questions?
Just a brief one. Thank you for the depth of the work. I know that Dr. Ariaga has made a big impact with the district already. I'm grateful for the board's opportunity to have some chance to work with her, and I know that this is making a big difference. What I would encourage is with, as the work moves forward, and we have continued positive measurement that has been shown in this report, for example, how do we celebrate that with the community? And that's probably, it's one thing to be able to change those metrics within the district and really make this a better environment and have much better learning happening, but beyond the learning, meeting our strategic goals of making sure that each and every student feels valued, knows that they belong here. Important to share that with the community so that when they leave here and go back into their neighborhoods, they know it's not just, it's not just here. This is part of what we believe, that all of these students belong here, they are contributing to our school community. We're all better teachers, better board members, better community members because they are here.
Can I just add one?
Absolutely.
Thanks so much for this, too. And as I've been on policy for the last three years, and DEAC has really had a big impact on the work that we're doing, really in that advisory capacity, it's really important to make sure that we are listening. It's, one of our goals as a board member, it's stated in our board goals, actually, to make sure that we are using that equitable framework with, within our policymaking. So it's just been really, I think we've made a lot of really good movement, and I know a lot of the wins that we're getting sometimes are really, you're not able to track. I know we still have a lot of work to do, though. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and just, I'm looking at these policies, and I know there's ones from last year that aren't even on here. So there's been a lot of work over the years, so I just really appreciate that, so.
Thank you guys very much. Appreciate. Next up, we have Business Director Mert Woodard and our Fiscal Year Cost Containment Strategies.
And as Director Woodard is coming up, and before he moves into his report, I just want to take time to thank our internal and external stakeholders. Many of you came to the Berg meetings, and your voice really mattered. It was so helpful for us in making decisions, and I just truly appreciate that. You know, I had said at the meetings all the time that my goal was to prioritize class sizes and to have the least impact on schools, and I really do believe that the feedback allowed us to do that. I do want to clarify that through an extensive audit of our e-finance system and by updating our staffing protocols and procedures to those that are now used around the state of Minnesota to tightly align with student enrollment, we found some staffing inefficiencies at the middle school level. And you're going to hear more about how we anticipate that there will be a minimal impact, both from Mert and maybe Dr. Smuzzel will come back up as well. Also, I want to say that we're very grateful for the one-time ESER and CARES dollars that were provided to help us meet the required social distancing mitigation efforts that really helped to keep our youngest learners in school in person during that time. Yet unfortunately, those dollars will come to an end on June 30th, and unfortunately, we need to adjust the paraprofessional staffing accordingly. Really important to note, we heard this, lots of questions about this as we were out talking with the community, that these adjustments do not impact special education supports. Those supports are provided based on student individualized education programs or their IEPs. And Mert showed, shared several times that as a district, we are required to demonstrate maintenance of effort, meaning if all of a sudden we just dropped 50% of the level of support for students with IEPs, the state would question that. How could that possibly happen? And so Mert and Director Remsing work on a report every year to really focus on that maintenance of effort. Finally, we are aware that Governor Walz has proposed a biennial package on the table, and that has led a lot of people to wonder why, in consultation with me, Director Woodard has set the budget conservatively at 2% for an increase of 2% both in fiscal year FY 2024 and fiscal year FY 2025. Really important to note that with every legislative session, there are also proposed unfunded mandates. So for instance, right now, there are two bills currently making their way through the legislature that have strong bicameral support, actually, that would also have a significant impact on the general fund. So those dollars that are coming in, they're already going out if those go through. One is HF 20, and the other bill is HF 827 or SF 680, depending on which side you're in, House or Senate. And the first one focuses on the unemployment insurance for hourly employees during the summer months when they're off. And then the other one focuses on increased prep time for teachers. Either one of those, both really great ideas, would have a significant impact on the general fund. And so with this in mind, I say that we have to be fiscally responsible and to prepare for, you know, what we don't know yet, which is really tricky, and we usually find that out in June. So having shared that information, I invite Director Woodard to share his report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Directors, Dr. Stanley, those who are still in attendance with us tonight. At the January 9th work session, I shared with you a financial forecast of the 2023-2024 general fund budget, including a projection of what the net effect on the fund balance would be, were we to maintain and continue our current operations this fiscal year and the subsequent fiscal year. Many assumptions were used to develop that forecast, and those assumptions remain today. However, before I begin to describe those assumptions and the resulting parameters, I'd like to do a quick recap of public education finance in the state of Minnesota as we stand today, which might be somewhat redundant for those who have heard this before, but I think it's always a good idea to remind the community about our financial realities. This is also something that we did at each of our five community meetings as part of the Berg process. Overall, public education finance in the state of Minnesota is extremely complex. It's also super-regulated by the legislature, and the majority of funding is tied to complex formulas that aren't always easy to understand. The most easy-to-understand revenue source, which is also the most significant, is the basic education revenue formula, often referred to as the formula allowance. This revenue source represents about 47% of the district's general fund revenue. So the district's operations and programming levels are very sensitive to any adjustments to this revenue source. The calculation here is super-simple. It's the number of pupil units served any fiscal year multiplied by the allowance figure. For Edina Public Schools, that represents about $65 million of our budget, which, as I said, is about 47%. While the formula allowance is a relatively stable source of revenue, we found that over the past 20 years, it does not keep up with inflation and the rising cost of education. Over the last 20 years, the formula has increasingly lost value to the point where if funding sources had been tied to inflation during that time period, we'd receive about $1,263 more per pupil, which translates to about $11 million of additional revenue, all things being equal. The next area where state aid isn't adequate is in special education aid, the state and federal government mandate levels of service, which we gladly agree with. However, they don't fully cover the cost of providing those services. At this time, we spend about $22.5 million per year on special education services, bringing in revenue of about $15 million. revenue of about $15 million. The gap of $7.5 million is often referred to as the cross subsidy, which we make up for out of our basic education aid and local property tax revenue, which limits the services we can provide not only to those special education students, but to all students. The simple conclusion that we can draw from this is that most of our revenue authority is tied to funding sources that don't increase with the rise of our expenditures, namely staffing. This leaves us in a situation where we have to consider budget containments on a year-to-year basis. As Dr. Stanley mentioned, many are speaking about the state surplus, so it's important that we address that. While we're hopeful that the governor's proposal, or better proposals, are appropriated by the legislature, developing a budget on political prostring probably isn't responsible and not something that we'll recommend at this point. Also, the governor's proposal, interestingly, caps the basic revenue formula increase in the subsequent biennium at a maximum of 3%, and it's likely to be closer to 2.3%. At this point, the district's recommended assumptions and parameters for next school year are as follows. We will maintain an unassigned fund balance of at least 6% of unassigned expenditures, which is the board minimum policy. The district ended the 2022 fiscal year with a fund balance of 7.37%, and is projected to end the current fiscal year at around 7% to 7.25%. For enrollment, we're using flat enrollment at this time, but also factoring the additional two sections of the Spanish dual-language program at Countryside Elementary. We certified our property tax levy at $8,563, or 63 students, rather, and the property tax revenue dollars are guaranteed as a result for the next fiscal year. Any adjustments will be made in fiscal year 2025, depending on the actual number of students served. Basic education formula, where our recommended parameter is about 2%, which is 137, sorry, pupil dollars per pupil unit. This results in an additional $1.3 million of revenue. The increase over the last eight years has been 2.06%. So even though nothing has been appropriated at this stage, we're fairly confident that we'll receive at least 2%. Were the governor's proposal of 4% to be appropriated by the legislature, we'd receive an additional $1.3 million over our current assumptions. Our operating levy allowance of $2,105 per pupil unit is indeed a fact at this point. We certified that at our December truth and taxation hearing. So that's not an assumption at this point. That will result in an additional $2.2 million. For context, Edina Public Schools is at the state maximum, so we're unable to get any more voter-approved operating referendum dollars. The capital projects levy is also a fact at this time. We'll receive an additional $454,000. That funding source is directly tied to increases to the property tax base of the district. At this stage, we're assuming that all other revenue sources will remain flat. For class sizes, we're assuming that there will be no changes to the current ratios and staffing. That means 20 to 24 at kindergarten, 22 to 25 in second grade, 24 to 26 in third grade, 25 to 27 in fourth and fifth grade, 28.15 in middle school, and 30.85 at high school. We will assume that we staff the specialist and teacher on special assignment positions at the same level we currently do. We recommend no additional nonlicensed staff are hired at both the school and department level. We recommend that special education staffing remain the same unless the demands of individualized educational programs dictate that we add additional staffing. Salaries and fringe benefits are estimated based on settled contracts, predictable step movement, and expected increases to expired contracts. Overall, we're budgeting using assumed 4.03% increase in the aggregate to all staff members. That's going to result in an additional $5.7 million of expenditures. For non-salary budgets, including utilities, supplies, fuel, et cetera, we're assuming a 4.59% increase or an additional $1.7 million above the current year. For our operating capital revenue and expenditure budgets, we are recommending distributing funds based on the current allotment sizes. And finally, we recommend a budget of $1.5 million for other post-employment benefits and severance costs, which is in alignment with our current actuarial study. Overall, we expect that the assumptions and parameters just described would result in a $4 million deficit to the district's unassigned fund balance policy, which would immediately put us out of compliance and likely result in the removal of our AAA credit rating. When the board approves those parameters, we'll immediately recommend a cost containment measure to the tune of $4 million. For context, that last February's board meeting, the prior administration presented a forecast of a deficit of about $3.7 million in fiscal year '24, which is quite close to my calculation, which was done with a totally different platform. At this point, we'll open it up to discussion.
Yep. Thank you for your work on this, Mert. Could you, maybe for the benefit of audience and community members watching at home, talk about if we were to lose our AAA bond rating, there is a pretty significant downstream ripple effect that happens, right? So if we dip into our general fund, we lose that rating, excuse me, there are some unintended consequences that would also hit our budget as a result of that. Can you talk a little bit about that so people understand the importance of maintaining that?
Absolutely, Director Shaw. Just for context, there are only three school districts in the state that have a AAA rating, and 93 out of about 16,000 school districts in the country. The result of losing that rating would mean that we would have to issue more debt to complete the projects that we otherwise would have. So our principal and interest payments for taxpayers would increase, so they would directly notice that on their property tax statements.
Thank you.
Any other questions for board members?
Mert, can you talk a little bit about what happens when we spend down the fund balance, the amount of years that we would have to do something like that, and how that could lead to statutory operating debt?
Yeah, so the state of Minnesota would place a district under statutory operating debt once it reaches a negative 2.5% unassigned fund balance. So we're quite away from that. We won't allow that to happen. However, the operational effects of that would mean it would be much more difficult for the district to pay its obligations, including payroll. We may have to enter into borrowing against our future state aid receipts or other lines of credit, which of course bear interest costs. So it's a, there's a large trickle-down effect of doing that. And were we to not make any adjustments, we would face that situation in fiscal year '26 or '27.
Bergman?
I think it's important, maybe for you to just give another background as to, when we talk about our fund accounts, right? We have, I believe it's 13 different accounts, something to that effect. Then each one has a different statutory and legal requirement of what you can and can't spend the money on, the general fund being the one that's the most, gives us the flexibility to do what we do, which is why we want to maintain the ability to have a fund balance. But I know there was a comment earlier tonight, I've seen it online, where people say, well, in our community ed budget, for instance, where we have, maybe have a surplus or something like that, well, we can then, if we grew that budget or that revenue bucket, that would somehow be able to offset the $4 million that we're talking about here. Could you maybe just try to address how the different fund accounts work and how, the limitations that are available to you to be able to find the revenue necessary to cover all of our expenses?
Absolutely, Director Bergman. Great question. We have about eight different governmental funds that are possible in this school district. State statute and governmental accounting standards dictate how we account for those funds. The Community Education Fund, which you referenced, is considered a special revenue fund, meaning revenues derived and expenditures made must fit that specific purpose. Every year, we have an audit from an independent CPA firm that ensures that we're using those funds appropriately, so we can't simply increase our fees for Kids Club and transfer the money to the general fund.
Director Neville?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the background. I really appreciate it. I'm wondering if you could just clarify for the board and the community, a little more information regarding enrollment. I appreciate what you included in your introduction and in the packet, but what I'd like to hear a little bit more about is the general picture of enrollment, not necessarily site by site or grade by grade. With Edina Public School residents within the school district boundaries, does our residential enrollment fill all of the seats needed to balance our budget?
Absolutely, Director Neville. Great question. At this moment in time, I believe resident enrollment makes up about 77% of our student population. So we would be quite inefficient in our class sizes and the number of staff we have, did we not, if we did not have open enrollment. That might result in the closure of programs, schools, et cetera. So it's very important that we maintain our current class size ratios by supplementing our resident enrollment with open enrolled students.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Woodard, on all of this work and for the intentionality of the way this is laid out. Can you, can you talk just a little bit about the prioritization of the different line items and if they are listed in a priority basis or not, just for those reading it?
And I think she's talking about the cost containment. Okay.
Well, I'm talking about cost containment and then the feedback category, too. Both.
Do we want to address that in this item or wait till the cost containment item?
Oh, that's fine. We can wait.
Yeah, if you could, I think, yes, if you could talk about the cost containment items and that document, that would be great.
At this point, the order in which those items appear on the documents, we're not prioritized in any particular manner. However, a robust process was used to develop those measures, three different finance committee meetings, countless meetings with the administration, including building principals and other leaders throughout the district, five community meetings, and a lot of thought was put into that. Dr. Stanley began each meeting by reminding us of our guiding principles and our mission and our vision. And I think we really aim the cost containment measures outside of the classroom to the best of our ability. Super difficult to do when your budget is made up of about 82% staff compensation.
I think it's also important as we're, if we're going to, are we going to get further into the cost containment component? Is that where we are now at this point?
Yeah, I think there's some confusion about the order of our agenda items. So I apologize, Director Woodard. So I think the board was expecting the cost containment first, the other one second, and you were, so if you could start, if you could go into some of the cost containment information, that would be helpful and just continue with that on this agenda item, so.
Absolutely, Chair Allenberg. So in order to address the projected $4 million deficit for next school year, the administration utilized the budget reduction, reallocation, and revenue generation process, otherwise known as the Berg. Gathering stakeholder input was the main goal of the Berg, and to that end, the district held the aforementioned five town hall meetings, hosted a staff survey, had countless meetings with senior-level leaders as well as building principals, and discussed the matter in detail at three different finance committee meetings. A more detailed description of the Berg and our findings, including some categorization of the feedback we received, is found in tonight's materials. The containments were developed by myself, my cabinet colleagues, the building principals, and we're confident that the cost containment recommendations will not impact the classroom or will minimize the impacts to classroom and to our existing staff. As I said, incredibly difficult to do considering the composition of our expenditures. I'll quickly describe some of the proposed cost containment recommendations before, again, opening up for discussion. The Business Services Account Specialist is a proposed reduction. That's one staff member, 1.0 FTE. The anticipated amount is $90,000. Those current duties have been absorbed by myself and other staff members. We're confident that we can maintain the accounting discipline of the district without that position. Business services, professional development, conferences, and travel fees, we believe that we can eliminate and do some of those services in-house, as well as suppress the amount of conference and travels we do each fiscal year. That would save about $15,000. The Countryside Addition Construction Chargebacks, the district recently issued debt to finance the construction of that addition. Due to our outstanding credit rating, we were able to generate an additional $300,000 of construction proceeds, which we can apply to the administrative costs of building that facility, my salary, portions of my salary, portions of the Buildings and Grounds Director's salary, portions of Principal Bergman's salary, et cetera. Long-term facilities maintenance chargebacks, each year, the district expends about $10 to $15 million for deferred maintenance needs. Those expenditures are accompanied by administrative costs that we believe are appropriate within that funding source, so we'll allocate about $100,000 to that. Lease levy for graduation, there's no reduction to the actual expenditure here. However, by law, we're able to generate revenue to rent graduation facilities, so we'll begin doing that. That's something the district hasn't done in the past. Food Service Fund and Community Education Fund chargebacks, those programs rely on general fund infrastructure in order to operate, be it utilities, the physical space, administrative costs, et cetera. We think that allocating a portion of those costs to those funds is appropriate, and we'll look to do that on a year-to-year basis while also maintaining the financial integrity of those individual funds. Curriculum capital, each fiscal year, the Teaching and Learning Department has allocated about $400,000 to pay for new curriculum. For next school year, we believe that we can eliminate or defer about $100,000 of those expenditures and then bring the budget back to $400,000 in fiscal year '25, so that will save about $100,000 next school year. The Alternative Teacher Compensation Program used to be cost-neutral. However, due to rising costs and revenue that's stagnant, program realignment is now in order. We have a peer coaching position that will be vacant as of July 1st, so we'll recommend eliminating that position as well as making other minor program adjustments to save about $185,000. We will recommend the Discontinuent of the Teacher Fellowship Program. The individuals who are currently part of that program will likely remain as part of the district's staffing, contingent upon them meeting performance standards and other requirements of holding those positions. So in the future, we will recommend that no additional fellows are added to the district. The Student Support Services Department has a number of administrative and non-classroom staff. We believe that through realignment and attrition, we can reduce the number of staff in that program and not affect the classroom. So there are about 1.5 FTEs there that we believe we can eliminate. The district's capital projects and technology levy does not pay for all of our technology needs, so there are some unassigned general fund expenditures we believe we can reallocate to that funding source to the tune of about $500,000. The Achievement and Integration Program, similar to the Alternative Teacher Compensation Program, is now out of alignment. Expenditures exceed the revenue that we produce from that program, so we'll recommend some administrative realignment, excuse me, and eliminations to increase or reduce the budget by about $150,000. The most notable figure on this cost containment recommendation is the middle school license rightsizing. The district established its per-pupil staffing a number of years ago and has adjusted that as the middle school program changed from a six-to-nine to a six-to-eight structure. That transition has unfortunately resulted in some inefficiencies in staffing. We've also seen enrollment decline at Valley View and South View due to bell time changes, as well as the re-establishment of program capacities of 336 pupils per grade level. We've discovered those, and we will recommend that we right-size those programs to fit with our established ratios. That's something that we would recommend regardless of our budget situation. Dr. Stanley mentioned our ESER funds and some of the staffing that were added as a result of that funding. We added about 15 paraprofessionals to maintain in-person instruction during the pandemic at kindergarten and first grade. We added about 15 paraprofessionals, which we will recommend reducing. That's something we would recommend regardless of the budget containment situation, again. And then finally, an operating capital freeze. Each fiscal year, the school sites and departments are allocated operating capital dollars. We think a one-year pause makes sense, given that those programs often have carryforward at the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you for reviewing those. So now I'll open up to questions about these specific reductions, as well as any additional questions you might have about the budget assumptions and how they are impacting the reductions. Director Shaw?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to take a minute to give a little bit of information to community members who maybe were not a part of our work session where we discussed this. I wanted to take an opportunity on behalf of the Finance and Facilities Committee to thank Mert for his work on this and share that in our meetings, that there was some pretty overwhelming appreciation for this work. I likened it earlier to kind of going through a checkup, right? Like going through and figuring out what needs to have attention brought to it in order to help make our budget and our district healthier. And so I appreciate the work in that. It's not easy, but for the long-term health of our district, to give us space and opportunity for when other things come to our plate, we need to make choices like this. So I just wanted to share that. And I don't know if Michael or Dan, if you wanted to share anything? share anything else from our Finance and Facilities meetings.
Yeah, I think what's important is that, you know, Director Woodard has just come to the district as of, you know, middle of last year, and not only he's taken on the process of doing the core job, but part of what he's doing is in the process, is ensuring that we're doing a constant review of what our financial picture is. Are we right-sized? Are we aligned properly? Are we looking at all programs and services to make sure that we're extracting the most benefit for the least amount of cost? And a lot of the things that you see here, and this is what happened in the Finance Committee, is we were looking at things to where realignment, as is the term that he's used several times tonight, these would be things that we would do anyway, even if we did not have a $4 million deficit projection that's then there. That's the prudent fiscal management that's required to run this public entity. So I want to make sure the community understands that, well, yes, whenever you see a $4 million number, that's a scary thing, and then you talk about cuts and so and so. You're talking about there are humans that are involved in the lives on a full-time equivalent that typically is a person. Let's not be insensitive to that and so on and so forth. But there are several things that are coming out of this that show that these things would have needed to be done regardless of whether we had that deficit or not. What we're trying to do is then right-size correctly so that not only can we address our concerns for this next year, but more importantly, we have things that are coming in the following year and the year after that, and we're not quite sure what the state funding is going to be. We have to be prudent as far as how we want to handle that. So to me, I just want to make sure, as a Finance Committee member and as a person who's been through this now for a little while, this is an excellent part of fiscal management that Director Woodard, Dr. Stanley, and the team are doing. And while it is difficult to always find these types of areas, these are the prudent steps that we need to take regardless of where we're going to go from the state. The last thing that's really important, too, the state won't make its decision until after the fact. And so we have to make decisions now based on what we think it might be and plan for the worst, and if it's better, well, then how do we then address going from there? It's a lot easier to address something that's better than something that's worse in this space. And so I just would ask that our, my colleagues and the community recognize that that's the approach that we're taking here. It's not meant to be doomsday, but it's meant to be appropriate for where we're going from that standpoint. I think that's a very, very solid financial management strategy to employ. So thank you.
Michael covered a lot of what I was going to say, but one other element that's come out of the Finance Committee that I wanted to highlight was there are other opportunities that I think that are out there for the district that we can look at from a proactive way that I think we're going to be tasked with over the next few years just to kind of meet it, whether it's the way formal business was being done and opportunities for us to either change policy or change structures in the way we do things. And I won't go into the specific details that you've mentioned before, but you've highlighted some things in the Finance Committee that might be opportunities for us to change or manage strategically the financial piece of it that I think are going to be important that the community be aware that we're still looking at those pieces as well.
Any other questions from board members or comments? Go ahead.
The only thing, Director Gaylor brought this up in the work session, and I keep thinking about it too, is can you just talk a little bit about if the state funding changes, what that looks like for this decision-making? Because I think that's an important thing to set expectations. And I know, Dr. Stanley, you also mentioned some things that are going on at the legislature right now.
Great question, Director Green. As Director Bergman mentioned earlier, we likely won't know until late May or late June about what the next BNA will bring for us financially. At this point, as the business director, I think it's prudent for me to recommend that any additional funding hit the fund balance. However, that would be a board direction or an directive to give to us in terms of the priorities, what would come back, when would it come back, what would it look like? So we would look to guidance from you.
Director Aaron?
I know it's been asked in a couple of meetings that I've been a part of is, you know, there's community partnerships that we have with, whether it be PTOs or Edina Give and Go or Edina Ed Fund and those types of things that, are there activities from a fundraising perspective that they can do that could help offset any of these items? Are these, if there's like a one-time piece of it that they wanted to target for those types of things? Is that something we would recommend in here just to fill a gap? And I don't know if you can answer that question or not, but I know that's been asked by community members.
Thanks for the question, Director Aaron. I can answer it in terms of my philosophy behind fundraising. I think allocating resources from fundraising to ongoing positions is tricky because those funding sources are not stable, they're not predictable. PTOs change from year to year depending on which students are enrolled, so I'd like to build our staffing based upon state aid and local property tax dollars, which are much more predictable in nature. We're very thankful for our community partnerships, and we welcome enhancing those, but long-range planning, I don't consider those fundraising efforts at all, to be honest.
Mert, I appreciate that. You know, typically, those fundraising dollars are really good for one-time purchases, right? So right now, we are grateful for the Ed Fund, for the work that they're doing to help to support us with letters funding. That's going to be a one-time purchase that's not ongoing. To try to staff longitudinally based on fundraising, it just is not some, it's just not fiscally sound, so.
So for the sake of clarity, I'd just like to walk through a couple of the feedback categories that we received and make sure people understand how they relate to the recommendations. And the first feedback was to continue to define excellence, to provide students with the same excellent educational opportunities, basically do not make reductions to curriculum, talent development, language, art, music, and physical education, and we are not recommending that at all, correct?
Absolutely. We'll be maintaining our current class sizes, all the specialists, all of our physical education, art, music, et cetera, no reductions to those staffing.
Student support services do not make reductions in the area of special education, mental health services, English learner services, and ADSOS.
Absolutely. As Dr. Stanley mentioned earlier, there's something called maintenance of effort, meaning that each fiscal year, we have to spend at least $1 more than the prior fiscal year on special education services unless we can demonstrate that there's been a material decrease to individualized education programs, which we're not anticipating at this point.
Okay. And then a couple of the other ones were related to budget reduction suggestions that we took into consideration, such as administration, non-classroom expenditures. I just wanted to ask you to clarify really fast. In one of the, I keep getting all the, in one of the assumptions that we're making, you had mentioned that we won't be adding staff. Could you please clarify what that means related to staffing follows pupils? And so if we do have a growth in pupils, it allows for a growth in staff. But what we mean by no growth in staff is we're not going to add staff beyond what the per pupil allotment budget that we have, correct?
Absolutely. Chair Allenberg, you hit it on the head. Assuming staff or pupil units remain flat, there would be no increase, so we're not altering the ratios. If enrollment appeared, we would adjust our staff accordingly.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
I think there's just one other clarification, not from you, but I think that's important to share, is that even though your parameters talk about a 2% of funding for the next two years from the state, even if it went to 4%, that would only add another $1.3 million to the revenue total from there, it would not make up the difference. That the amount of funding that the state would actually have to allocate in its formula to actually help us actually achieve what we're looking for, we would need considerable amount either on the basic funding formula or in the special services, cross-subsidy, both. There's a number of things that would have to happen in order for that to magically fill the gap. Is that correct?
That is correct. If the governor or the legislature appropriated 6% on the funding formula, that would take care of this issue. The cross-subsidy recommendation would add about $3.5 million as it stands today, so that would also make a big impact. However, that's really one-time funding. All of that can be undone by the next legislature as part of the 2024 general election, so.
So again, it's just important to understand that when we're trying to figure out how to fiscally manage and budget going forward, that even with a surplus that's available today, in and of itself would not necessarily solve our problem for the long-term future.
Absolutely correct. Also, were we to simply break even year over year, we would eventually be out of compliance with our fund balance policy because our expenditure base will grow every single year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Woodard. Appreciate all your work on this. Next, we're going to move to our policy review with Policy Chair Regina Neville.
Thank you, Chair Allenberg. Just wanted to begin with a brief thank you to Director Green and the members of the Policy Committee who have preceded me with their work on policy. They've done, made significant effort to bring policy review up to date and have also established a thorough record and tracking process for taking a look at policy review and for cross-reference. So I'm grateful for that and happy to join as the chair for the Policy Committee. We have three policies in tonight's agenda. All are here for discussion. The first one, Policy 302, the superintendent has no changes, and I'll just pause to see if there's any, if there are any notes that anyone would like to make regarding 302.
Director Neville, would you just explain what it means when a policy comes through as rapid review?
Rapid review? Thank you, yes. So there are some, our general process for policy has discussion at the committee level, and it will bring into that process the cabinet members who are assigned to that policy and also any additional members of the district community who work with that policy directly. We will be taking a look at that policy for changes in state statute to make sure that our policy is updated to comply with statute, and also any changes in our district. So does that policy still meet the needs of our district? So many of the changes that we'll see going forward in different policies reflect some of those different adjustments. Rapid review means that there are none of those changes applicable. Everything is still in compliance with state statute. There are no changes in the Minnesota School Board Association general policy, and we have had no recommendations at the committee. Therefore, we're suggesting that we just bring it here for discussion and then approval at the next meeting. Yes. So if there are no other suggestions regarding 302, I'm going to move on to 301. This is also discussion. It's regarding school district administration. Just a couple of items that are being recommended for this particular policy. In Section 2, the general statement of policy, there's language added to reflect the goal for equitable access to education. And then there's also some clarification in paragraph number three, general responsibilities, sub-paragraph C, to include the superintendent designee with the list of other staff members who apply to this particular policy. Are there any questions or clarification requests for 301? Okay, I'm going to move on to 613, graduation requirements. There was considerable discussion regarding graduation requirements and also a lot of work done by our cabinet, so I'd like to invite Cabinet Member Jody St. Hubert to join us to give us some background.
Thank you, Director Neville. Policy 613 is, highlights graduation requirements, and I'm just going to walk through the highlights of the changes and answer any questions that you might have. The first discussion was around the Roman numeral number two, general statement of policy. The last sentence was added just to make sure that we are being inclusive of all our Edina students as we increase pathways and opportunities. And so examples of students that that might pertain to would be students in some of our options programming or Edina virtual pathway. So that is the first area that I wanted to highlight. And then I go, I'm going to move to just noting that under the cross-references, we did put Policy 624 there, online learning, to refer back to in conjunction with that statement. We also, in Appendix 1, went through, and the main changes there are in alignment with the new standards that are happening specifically. Number three is specific to science. Number five is specific to the arts. And then you'll see in number two, jumping back to math, that's not necessarily new standards, but we're making sure that there was clarity of language there in the most simplest form that we could provide. And then number seven is just making sure that we're updating the number of elective options that align also with state requirements. And then the final exciting addition is Appendix 2, where we added our very exciting Edina Public Schools portrait of a well-rounded Edina graduate to the policy. Are there any questions that I can answer?
I have one question for clarification. So in the appendix, number two, talking about math, six semester credits of mathematics, including an Algebra II credit or its equivalent. So we took out in grades nine through 12. Does that mean students who achieve that, say, before they get to ninth grade, is that meeting their requirements and they would not be responsible for taking any additional math? Is that correct?
It is meeting their requirements.
Okay.
It is strongly still required that they continue with math all the way through high school. It benefits them as they go into their higher education or whatever they like to pursue after high school, but.
Okay. But if they do hit Algebra II, say, as an eighth grader, I just want to make sure I understand it clearly.
That's part, Algebra II as an eighth grader fits within the.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? So, but that isn't a change in the way that it is currently done. It's just a change to reflect the policy of what's already being done at the schools.
Yes.
Correct?
It's a point of clarification within the policy to try to align with current practices and make sure that's clear.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Are there any other questions regarding 613 that board members would like the Policy Committee to consider before we bring it back for action? Okay, I think that's all we have. Thank you.
I think you're saying that.
I know, I was going to say.
Yeah, I think you're up next, yeah. We're going to move on to our action items. Do I have a motion to approve the student travel?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We now welcome Director of Teaching and Learning Jody D. St. Hubert to talk about student travel opportunities.
Thank you, Chair Allenberg, Dr. Stanley, and board members. I'm excited to have these travel reports in front of you for action. They have, all of them have been brought to discussion at a board work session and discussion at a board meeting. And there were questions at the last board meeting, there were questions around scholarships, and so I did want to just give a high, quick highlight and information on the follow-up in regards to that. Had an opportunity to meet with Assistant Principal Jen Carter at the high school and also one of our travel experience leads who does a lot of trips, just to touch base on where we're at with those travel experiences and how we're providing the support to not only remove the barriers but escort students through. And that was a good conversation. One aspect that's really important to bring to the board that we'll continue to highlight when we bring further travel experiences to you is that a lot of the partnerships that we currently have with our traveling partners have scholarship opportunities built in that we partner with. And those that don't, we are making sure, we will continue to make sure that there are fundraising opportunities. However, an exciting next step is that we're going to get a small group of staff together to see how we can be, provide some cohesion and coherence to that fundraising opportunities so that there's a collective effort in trying to make sure that we, again, open doors and escort our students through. There was also a conversation around communication and where and how we're communicating that these options are available for students and families, and so we're excited to continue to grow our work in that area, and I feel there's some really strong action steps already in place. I wanted to bring that update. And then the other thing that I wanted to make sure I did, all the other reports are as they were within our discussions, and they're, the only one that has changes to it is the high school social studies, travel-based learning commemorating the 80th anniversary of D-Day. When Mr. Greggs, the travel coordinator for that experience, he was recently contacted by the agency that we're working with, and unfortunately, the trip as it was laid out in the first report was sold out. And so there's highlighted in the report there, there's an option that we would like to present here, and it is, the changes would be that they are still able to do the tour in alignment with the standards and what we presented with those standards in the first round of presentation, and that would just be a switch to starting the tour in Berlin. And so it is more of a Germany-France instead of the England-France experience because the England-France is what sold out. There is a slight cost increase for families, and that's stated in the report at $290, and then the dates of travel would vary slightly but would still be in the summer range of 2024. So I wanted to highlight that information and changes. Everything else has remained the same.
Do board members have any questions or comments about the travel? Do board members have any questions or comments about the travel? All those in favor of approving the student travel, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The student travel is approved. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the budget assumptions and parameters?
So moved.
Second.
Did you get any of that, Anne?
Michael was the first. Janie was the second.
Okay. We discussed this earlier, but does anyone have any questions for Director Woodard about the budget assumptions and parameters? All those in favor of approving the budget assumptions and parameters, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The budget assumptions and parameters are approved. Do I have a motion to approve the General Obligation Capital Notes and Facilities Maintenance Bond, Series 2023A?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Director Woodard?
Thank you, Chair Allenberg. At the June 2022 Regular Meeting of the School Board, you approved an updated 10-year long-term facilities maintenance, or LTFM, plan to finance deferred maintenance projects throughout the district. The district has elected to utilize a mixture of pay-as-you-go levy authority as well as bonded debt to finance those projects. An LTFM debt issuance was always planned for this fiscal year. However, the administration believes it to be prudent to issue a small capital note in conjunction with that issuance to finance planned pupil transportation vehicle purchases as well as planned technology device purchases. This will allow the district to spread the payments for those devices across the useful life of those assets instead of paying for those upfront in the current fiscal year. That will provide the district with some short-term budgetary flexibility. The district would not begin making payments, interest and principal payments until fiscal year 2025. The resolution has a reimbursement built into it, meaning that we'll pay for the equipment out of our pockets now and be reimbursed by the proceeds this spring. The resolution also includes a parameter regarding the sale and a true interest cost maximum of 4%. We'll hope to issue at about 3%, but that's, that's an estimate at this point. We're not sure what the, the interest rate market will do between now and May. However, whatever we issue at, it's going to be much less than a traditional financing of a vehicle or, or device, which would be upwards of 5% based on the multiple quotes and banks that I spoke to over the last several weeks. Please note that the capital note, principal and interest payments will be paid for out of the operating capital and capital projects levy funds, which are actually two very stable funding sources for the district. This is a relatively unique strategy for the district, not something that it's done before. So it's been reviewed in great detail by the Finance Committee of the Board and the district's municipal advisors. Our advisors will be present at the March work session to formally present a full pre-sale report. We'll then recommend ratifying the bids that were taken at the April or May School Board meeting. With that, the recommended action is before you.
Director Shaw?
Thank you. I did want to take a moment to let you guys know that this did come through finance and facilities and there was a robust conversation about it. I want to take a moment to acknowledge and give thanks to Mert there, for the creativity and the thoughtfulness that he put into this. It's not something that's been done in the past. And so I just want to take a moment to say that he really did go above and beyond to make this opportunity available to us and to recognize these cost savings to us. So I wanted to take a moment to thank you for that, Mert.
Thank you.
I was going to say something similar to Director Shaw, just saying, thank you for highlighting that this was a new strategy for the district because that was one of my questions was if we had done this before. Director Woodard, is there any downside or risk to us taking this approach?
The only downside is over the life of the assets, which is between five and eight years, five for the devices, eight for the buses, will incur interest costs. But again, we'll spread those over the life and each fiscal year we'll make sure that we budget for the principal interest costs, meaning that we'll take what our maximum revenue is and immediately remove what the principal and interest payments will be. The capital projects levy fortunately is tied to the increase to our property tax base. So each year we'll get more money out of that funding source. And operating capital will also increase as our buildings age and as we enroll more students.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? We will now vote to approve the General Obligation Capital Notes and Facilities Maintenance Bonds, Series 2023A. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The General Obligation Capital Notes and Facilities Maintenance Bonds, Series 2023, are approved. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the 2023 School Board Election Agreement between the City of Edina and Edina School District?
So moved. Second.
So this has come through the Governance Committee and it is an agreement for a division of labor between the City of Edina and the Edina School District to conduct the 2023 general election and only the 2023 general election for the school board. The attached resolution is an updated partnership agreement because the original agreement was outdated. This agreement has been reviewed by District Legal Counsel. Trevor Helmers and his recommended changes are reflected in this document. If approved tonight, this will then go to City Council for their review and vote. That includes the board's changes next week. Do any other members of the Governance Committee have any comments?
No, I just wanted to reemphasize that this is just for the 2023 election only, that this is a agreement with the city just for this upcoming election only and that there is a partnership committee that is meeting. I am not on that committee, but meeting to talk about next steps for both the city and the district to move forward. So...
And I think I'd only add that this basically just moves us forward from the same things that we've been doing with the city for the last 30 years. This agreement is basically incorporating that for one more year. So nothing is changing. So the confidence in the election process that the city's been running for the school district will be maintained for this year while we consider what the future is going to be.
Any questions, comments from board members? All those in favor of approving the 2023 School Board Election Agreement with the City of Edina, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The election agreement is approved. Do I have a motion to approve Policies 212, 214, and 217?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Director Neville?
These are policies that have all been reviewed by the board. No changes since we've last seen them. I think we're ready to go unless there are any other questions.
Questions from board members? We will now vote to approve Policies 213, 214, and 217. All those in favor of approving...
It's Policy 212.
Sorry? 212, I have a typo. I apologize. We will now vote to approve Policies 212, 214, and 217. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Policies 212, 214, and 217 are approved. That is all for our action items. We'll now move on to board leadership and committee updates. Anyone?
I just have one quick update. The Legislative Action Committee, Member Shaw and Member Arum and myself, if anyone is interested in helping to advocate the legislature, which has a lot of action going on for education, please go to our webs, go to the website under School Board and you will see a lot of information. You can sign up for our mailing list. We have a rally day going on at the Capitol on March 8th that we'll be joining with partners and other districts in the state to really advocate for a lot of the discussion that we heard tonight about funding and helping to, one of our number one prioritizes to work on stabilizing education funding for public schools in our district and throughout the state. So please check that out.
Thank you, Director Green. We'll now move on to Superintendent Updates.
Testing, testing. Okay, great. It's related to a member of our Transportation Department. And the subject line said, "Thank you, Mr. Mike." It said, "Dear Dr. Stanley, Caroline, and Jeff." Carrie is our director, Transportation Supervisor, and Jeff is the Assistant Supervisor. It said, "Please express our heartfelt gratitude to Mr. Mike Graham's School Bus, Number 54, Driver. Today, Mike returned to our home at the end of his day to drop off Graham's misplaced backpack. Gee was having a lot of anxiety about it, and Mike came through in a clutch way. These are the moments of kindness that shape our children and future generations." And then I thought that I would add Jeff's response. He said, "Mike is indeed a great driver, not to mention a really great person all around. So thank you so much, Mr. Mike." And then this is, this one is just a little bit delayed and I would just be completely remiss if I didn't read it. This came to actually the school board and it said, "We are sending this note today." I'm sorry, this is from Molly at Berry Patch School. She says, "We are sending this note today to express our gratitude to the district on the excellence of the Early Childhood Special Education Team here in Edina. A longtime community partner, we at the Berry Patch Schools are blessed, week in and week out, by the team of specialists that come alongside students in our two schools as well as other early childhood centers in our community. We were honored to have our staff receive a full morning of training from a team of Edina Early Childhood Special Education staff in October. Kate Strand led the team in creating an outstanding collection of information and resources on speech and language development, autism spectrum disorder, sensory processing, and the screening and referral evaluation process for families. Cheryl Parrish, Cassie Be, I practiced this a million times, Bierke Armstrong, Meredith Pecky, Ann Gant, and Kate each presented in their area of expertise. The Berry Patch team came away from our training, further connected to the ECSE team, encouraged and motivated to continue the hard, rewarding work in our classrooms, and inspired to continue learning ourselves. We wanted to be sure that the school board members know how grateful we are for this team and their foundational work in our community, not only with our young children, but also with those of us coming alongside these children and families. In honor of the gift they gave our team, we are giving a $500 donation to Edina Give 'N Go in honor of the Edina ECSE team. It takes a village to raise these kids, and we are blessed to be part of it with you. warmly, Molly." Amazing. I mean, it just shows just the incredible impact that our teachers have, not just internally with the students who are in our schools, but Berry Patch serves many, many others, residents in the community. And so that's just something to be really proud of. And then this came from Linda Noor. She says, "Hi, Dr. Stanley. I had to share with you how wonderful our DMTS staff are. I have been with the district 18 years and have always found the staff helpful, friendly, and quick to respond. I can only imagine how many emails, calls, and requests they get each day, especially Natasha. And yet every time I contact Natasha with a question, in parentheses, I try not to bug her too much," smiley face, "she is so quick to respond and help. I really appreciate her and her staff. Have a great day. Linda Noor, Dupressa Specialist." And we just had some staff that were just recognized for their greatness. So Lindsay Smaka, who's a high school teacher and she leads our Global Student Program, was awarded the AFS USA Global Educator Award, which we're super excited about. Chris Griggs, one of our social studies teacher, is the Minnesota Council's Social Studies Teacher of the Year, which is amazing. And then Giovanna Margalie, fourth grade teacher at Cornelia, and Emily Waggy, I hope I pronounced it. I did it. Good. I practiced so much, who is an ABS teacher at Highlands. They are nominated for Minnesota Teacher of the Year. That's exciting! And then, finally, we got, we received news today that we were awarded the Youth Skills Training Grant for $100,000 to support our pathways work. And huge thank you to Dr. Leland, Dr. Smazel, and Director D. St. Hubert. Very well done. Thank you. So those of you who stayed here, you got to partake in all that great news, right? That is awesome. That, that's all of my announcements.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley. That's amazing. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No one ever opposes. We are now adjourned. Thank you.